Good evening, we'd like to welcome you to our City Council Successor Agency Public Finance Authority Meeting. This is October 15th and at 6:00 PM. Before we start, we'd like to invite everyone to say the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would follow along with me, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I have none.
Okay. Do we have a motion for council's approval of the agenda?
I make the motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Our next item is awards presentations appointments proclamations, we have none. Our next item is citizens comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor should come to the lectern, identify yourself and please use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open moving laws, no action will be taken by the council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for follow-up and a report. Is there anyone who would like to make any comments? Seeing none. We will go to public hearings, we have two items. The first item is council consideration and adoption of the city of Colinga 2015 urban water management plan. Mr. Brewer?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight is the public hearing for the adoption of the 2015 urban water management plan. And no, that's not a typo, this is really a housekeeping item for the city to proceed forward with the urban water management plan. And soon we'll be working on the 2020. Tonight, we're recommending that we hold a public hearing, accept any comments on the city's proposed urban water management plan, and then formally adopt the plan. On January of 2020, the city entered into a contract with AM Consulting Engineers to complete the 2015 urban water management plan. Urban water management plans are important tools for reporting water agencies' long-term planning efforts to meet future demands and tracking progress toward achieving state-manded water conservation targets. They're also state laws linking approval for large developments to water supply availability. In 1983, the California Legislature enacted the Urban Water Management Planning Act. It requires that every urban supplier that provides water to 3,000 or more customers, or that provides more than 3,000 acre-feet of water annually, ensure the appropriate level of reliability to meet the needs of its customers during normal, dry, and multiple dry years. The act describes the contents of the urban water management plan, as well as how urban water suppliers should adopt and implement the plans. Plan updates are required every five years, and updates maintain the water authority's eligibility for state grants. And so the 2015 is in dire need of completion. Staff has prepared and we have got this project completed. And so at this time, we would like, if there's any questions that you have regarding the document, more than happy to answer any. If not, we would ask that you open the public hearing and then place a motion to approve.
Open the public hearing for any comments? Is there anyone who'd like to make any public comments? Seeing none, the public comment section is closed. Council, any questions or comments you'd like to make to Mr. Brewer in regard to this item? Seeing none. So do we have a motion for adoption of the city of Colinga's 2015 urban water management plan?
No move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Protim Ramsey?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Stolt?
Aye.
Mayor Lander?
Aye. Our next item is item two, which is the City Council Consideration and Approval of Resolution Number 3989, adopting revised water and sewer rates effective November the first of the year 2020. Mr. Brewer?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Staff is recommending approval of Resolution 3989 to adopt revised water and sewer rates that will go into effect November 1st of this year to cover increased operation costs, bond covenants, and critical capital projects for the water system. We understand the country's going through unique times, and the city of Colinga is especially sensitive to the current circumstances we find ourselves in. It is never easy to ask for more when going through these times, but water is an essential fabric to our well-being, to the well-being of this community, and the rate payers, the breaks paid by the residents are what keeps our water safe and reliable. Unfortunately, cost seems to always increase, yet never decrease. Managing and maintaining water and sewer infrastructure is extremely expensive and vital to providing reliable and safe drinking water. Staff has spent months on project planning with IGS Services to develop a fair and equitable rate case that limits the impact to our residents as much as possible. The finance and rate analysis were developed by IGS and supported by Wolf Hansen and Company. We posted a city council workshop on July 29th to discuss the rate case and issued a 218 notice. The formal rate study was completed by IGS and rate increase notices were issued by September 1st. The city publicized and hosted two virtual community meetings via Zoom, one on September 29th and one on October 8th. And those presentations were posted to the city's website for residents to view that were unable to attend. So tonight is the official hearing, and I'm going to pass it on to Dan with IGS Service to give a brief overview of the water and sewer rate case.
Thank you, Sean. Mayor and City Council, thank you for this virtual opportunity. Come a long way to get to this point. What I would like to do is review my presentation that I made to you in late July. It's been over two months. Nothing has changed, really, from what I presented at that time, but it seems appropriate that I would do that for your benefit since the time has passed, because this is a significant decision, and also for any members of the public that are watching. So with that, I've been practicing sharing my screen. And so, Sean, can you see the water tank picture now?
I can, yes.
Well, good. So this opening slide is the same slide I showed before. This is significant because it's the Derrick Water Tank. The Derrick Water Tank is almost 50 years old and needs to be extensively rebuilt. It needs to be drained, it needs a new roof. It will be sandblasted inside and out. It's the largest single-cost project on the list. So for folks that haven't seen it, it's kind of hard to miss, sitting out on the west side of town. Sean covered the steps already taken. Since the preliminary workshop meeting with you City Council in July, the rate study was completed, the written rate study. That's been available to the public, it's been on the website, and it's also attached to your agenda packet. One key principle that I always want to start with is that the enterprise funds within any city operate as individual businesses, and they are separate from the city's general fund. So the city has a financial responsibility to operate, whether it's natural gas, or water, or sewer, or refuges, any of the enterprise funds, to operate them in a responsible manner, which means collecting adequate revenue to cover expenses for each of them individually. The money that's collected from rates for each of the enterprise funds is not commingled with the city's general fund. It is tracked separately, the rate analysis views it separately, and it's shown separately in your audited financials. The focus this evening is on sewer and water. The sewer needs an increase to cover operating expenses, and really operating expenses only, as I'll get into more detail in a few minutes. The last increase was from a resolution over 20 years ago in 1999. Rates have been constant since 2005. So sewer rates in Colinga haven't changed for 15 years. The last watering, water rate increase we did was in 2015, and the increase that we need this round is both for operating expenses and capital projects, and I'll review that again. The sewer enterprise has a significant fund balance. It's about $3 million. And combined with that, the sewer enterprise doesn't have a lot of projects that need to be done. So there is no need for funding for sewer enterprise projects. Not only that, but leftover from the 2012 bonds is, there's still $700,000 sitting there. That $700,000 is going to be rolled into the refinance, because it's simply not needed right now. And over time, as the slide indicates, impact fees have been a significant contribution to the sewer fund. There are some minor projects for sewer. The new bar screen was already done in 2018. And then these other three projects are around less emphasis on personnel at the facility, whether it's security or automated detection of oxygen levels. But it's a small facility. It's always, almost always, more cost-effective to move towards equipment instead of people, to use people efficiently. This is the, a lot of detail on this slide, it's in the written rate study. This is the basis showing revenues and expenses for, in this case, sewer. This shows a 37% increase. I showed you 40% back in July, I was able to lower it just a few percent. I'm not going to go over this in detail, if you have questions, we can come back to it. But the main objective with both water and sewer is to set the revenue at an adequate level to cover expenses, such that down here at the bottom, the debt service coverage ratios are achieved to make the bond covenant. So we are setting numbers at the top to achieve numbers at the bottom, accepting everything that's in the middle, all the expenses. And again, there's a lot of detail there, we can come back to it if you'd like to. But these rates, both for sewer and for water, are set to cover the system for the next five years and leave the system healthy at the end of five years. So I'm taking you right away to the impact on a residential customer, single-family dwelling. It's 40%, which sounds like a lot, but it's only $6.27 a month, because the rate is already relatively low. For commercial customers, commercial customers, sewer bills are linked to their monthly water volume. And we have observed there are some customers who have higher sewer bills in the summer because of irrigation. We, I have already identified those customers, because I have the data. And following tonight, based on City Council, your decision, we will contact them, working with staff, to help them get irrigation meters installed. The reason it's important is the new volumetric rates are essentially twice what they were before, but they were way too low before. And it's very easy to defend the new volumetric rate that they're being charged, because it is simply the average rate to treat wastewater for the system. They're simply paying the average cost per unit volume. This is the sewer rate schedule. Again, showing residential rates going from 1568 to 2195. The rate structure that was used before is retained. So for example, commercial customers will pay a minimum of 2195. If their volumetric usage exceeds 46 times the volume, more than 2195, they'll pay more. So there's not that many customers that have a lot of volume, but those few customers that have the volume, we're going to contact to. Nobody likes a surprise. Onto water. Water is, has a lot more involved. Here are the components, this is what I covered in July. First, a refinance of the series 2012 bonds for savings that can be achieved there. Critical capital projects, number one on the list is that Derrick Water Tank. New bond funding, which is $7 million of bond funding associated with those new projects. A critical issue to increase, to needing to increase the rates as they increase operating expenses. And then finally, the opportunity this presents to be able to enter into that new water contract with the Bureau of Reclamation. So I'll just touch on those briefly as I move through this. First of all, I always like to be able to answer the question, where did money go? Where did the money go? The series 2012 was about $2,012.8 million. Of that, $7 million was refinancing the previous bonds. $5 million went to water and $700,000 went to sewer. None of that $700,000 was used, as I covered before. And the benefit of the refinance will be around $100,000 per year and lower finance costs. That moves around as the market moves around. Working with Bud Levine and his team, that will be looked at carefully when the time finally comes to do the refinance. Regarding the water money, the $5 million, about $2.9 million of those dollars went to the brand-new Palmer tank that was built. About $800,000 went to the Jane Avenue Looping. There was an addition of about $83,000 interest dividends and adjustments. That leaves $1.4 million there, that is there right now. And that $1.4 million that's left over from 2012 will be used for the SCADA upgrade at the water plant. And that accounts for that entire $5 million. Here is the list of new capital projects for the water system. Down here in the middle is the Derrick Water Tank. Right now, that's estimated at $2.6 million, that's the single largest project. The second-largest project is the TTHM project, which is total trihalomethanes. I always have to think about how to say that, anybody does. I suppose that's why people say TTHM. That is a completely new facility at the water plant to control the level of TTHMs. TTHMs are a byproduct of chlorine, when chlorine is added to the water. And the facility has been meeting the requirement. There have been problems in the past. This new equipment will assure compliance far into the future. You can also see a lot of other projects on the list. Staff has spent months compiling this project. These are all projects that are absolutely essential to safe and reliable delivery of water in the water system. And this is where I can remind us all that the water system's going on 50 years old. It hasn't had, really, we might say enough attention over the years. So in a sense, this is catch-up to do a lot of capital repair and replacement on the water system. This is the revenue and expense detail for the water enterprise. In this case, rather than one increase followed by inflationary increases, we really worked hard to spread out the needed increase over three years. This is for the benefit of rate payers, so they're not seeing the entire increase in one year. We're also helping ourselves, probably coincidentally, in that the rate increase that's proposed will go in place in the middle of the winter, so residential water usage will be down. So the initial increase is 16% overall, followed by 28% increases in consecutive years, and then the 3% increases are to follow inflation. And once again, after taking into consideration all of the expenses and debt service costs associated with the proposed new debt, we're making sure that we achieve the debt service coverage ratio that we need to. One thing you notice here looking at 2020 is we're not achieving debt service ratio. It needs to be 1.25, and what we have for 2020 is only 1.19. And if we are not able to obtain these rate increases, the ratio will go below 1, which means not only are we meeting the bond covenant, but from an operating standpoint, the enterprise fund would be going backwards. Moving on. I just wanted to touch briefly on this new contract with USBR. Currently, the city is doing two-year extensions. We do not have a long-term contract in place with the federal government. There's no concern whatsoever that they won't provide water. They are the city's sole water source. The benefit of the new agreement is that it goes into perpetuity. So there will not be another contract negotiation. It's the same rate schedule that we're paying now to the federal government. One component in that rate will be removed for this thing they call allocated contractor construction cost that will lower the city's rate about $21 per acre foot. In order to enter into this agreement, the city has to pay off the lump-sum amount associated with this contractor construction cost. It was about a million, it's dropping over time. So associated with this rate structure and with the financing that will follow is up to $1 million to pay off the federal government, USBR, for the new contract, but then benefit from lower rates. So it's actually advantageous to rate payers. In fact, based on $1 million, the annual overall water cost decreased about $40,000 a year. This shows a comparison of the existing water rates by rate class to the proposed rates. So the light blue rates are the existing, the dark blue are the proposed. You see that they're all going up proportionally for the urban sector, which is in town, for the rural sector, which is primarily the oil companies, and then for the two prisons. I'm also showing here where the average rate is, just above $5, showing that for folks in town, whether commercial or residential, overall, they're paying slightly higher than the average rate. The reason is because there's more infrastructure associated with water supply in town. Whereas rural customers, the oil companies primarily, and the prisons, for example, they don't need to be paying for fire service, and they don't need to be paying for the distribution system, because they're not on the distribution system. And this is an example of how cost-of-service rate-making works. You charge customer classes for their burden on the system. This is the rate schedule for water rates. And this is showing the rates out for the next five years and showing the impact on each rate class. I'm going to focus here on residential. First to show, this is what the profile of a median residential customer looks like. Of course, using more water in the summer for irrigation and very little water comparatively in the winter. It's 162,000 gallons a year, very typical median residential customer. And so when we look at the cost of that 162,000 gallons a year, this is what it looks like, combined with sewer, sewer in the red, I guess we'll call that, water in the blue. Currently, that median customer would pay $67 a month. With the rate increase, when customers are paying their bills, when they're making payments in January, it would be $13 higher. And that's based on an average month. So $13 higher at the outset, and then when the next increase is made, it's only $6, and then $5 after that. And that's where we've achieved stepping up the rates. And we're able to do that, not because operating expenses are stepping up, but because the payment schedule for the refinance, or for the new bond, is stepped up thanks to that they can be able to, they can do that. So conclusions. There's the refunding opportunity for both water and sewer that I covered. The refunding opportunity provides the opportunity and other finance to enter into the win contract. Operating costs have increased significantly for both water and sewer since the last increases. We likely are not achieving our bond covenant this year, for 2020, which would be last year, and it certainly will not be achieved without the rate increase. The water system capital projects are absolutely critical. They are absolutely critical to begin to reinvest in the water system infrastructure. And as I indicated before, we must have, the city must have the rate increases to responsibly and safely operate the systems, especially the water system. So this is an opportunity for discussion, and any questions City Council has or the public? At some point, we will have a count of written protests that were received. And then beyond that, City Council, you can vote. And we hope for new rates effective November 1st. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so we will go to public hearing, I have two items. One is a protest, and the other is not a protest, only a comment in view of the fact that there was no name and address put on this information. So the first one will be only a comment, and here's what it reads. "I totally understand the urgent need of repairs to our water system and increased cost of operation. I feel this is due to poor leadership over the years to have allowed it to become to this point. City Councilperson Atkinson has informed the tax-paying citizens the city has a great deal of surplus monies. They are looking for ways to spend and has proposed doing so on several very expensive items. I ask that City Council consider using those monies rather than imposing such a large sudden increase upon the tax-paying citizens, especially at such a time when many are under such hardship and having great difficulty making ends meet. A gradual increase could be looked at in the future." That's the end of that comment. Okay, the next item is a protest. This reads, "My name is Charles Vaughn. I live at 361 Washington Street in Colinga. My wife Eloise Vaughn and I are the owners of this property. We believe that the increase is excessive. We are both elderly and we live on a fixed income, and this increase will be very difficult on us. I'm sure we are not alone in this case. I also noticed that all your figures are based on a one-inch meter. Back when these new meters that property owners had to pay for were installed, the then-city employees reduced the outlet to 3/4 inch. In reality, that makes our service only 3/4 inch, not one inch. In conclusion, we protest these rate increases. We believe the city does not spend its monies wisely. For example, letting the trees die in the median on Washington Street, then replanting, and on top of that, turn the median into a copy of the Mojave Desert at a cost of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money. Respectfully yours, Charles Vaughn, 361 Washington Street." Thank you. Is there any other comments?
None.
Seeing none. Council, public hearing section is closed. Council, any questions or comments? Seeing none. Then I'm asked for a motion for approval of Resolution Number 3989, adopting revised water and sewer rates effective November 1st of the year 2020. Do I have a motion for approval?
Mayor, this is the city attorney. Do I understand that there was just the one protest vote received?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion for approval of Resolution Number 3989?
Motion?
We have a motion? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Who made the motion?
Ray.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. May I have roll call, please?
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramsey?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Stolt?
Aye.
Mayor Lander?
Aye. Motion has passed. Thank you very much. Our next item is the consent calendar, we have nine items. Item one is approve the minutes of October 1st, 2020. Item two is adopt Resolution Number Item two is adopt resolution number 3987, unanticipated revenue derived from the Colinga Police Department's K-9 Foundation. Item three is counsel consideration and adoption of resolution number 3988, authorizing the commencement of proceedings in connection with the issuance and sale of revenue bonds by the Colinga Public Financing Authority to the Finance Department and refinance water system and sewer system improvements, retaining a municipal advisor and underwriter, bond counsel and disclosure counsel. Item four, counsel authorizing the city manager to execute a project development agreement with Johnson Controls to develop an energy service project, water treatment plan, solar PV system with battery backup, pursuant to California Government Code 4217.10-4217.18. Item five is approval change in vendor for the portable radio purchases. Item six is adoption of joint powers agreement and bylaws for California Intergovernmental Risk Authority, which permits the merger of Public Agency Risk Ensuring Authority of California and the Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund. Item seven, police department's third quarter report. Item eight, Public Works Utilities and Community Development Monthly Report for September 2020. Item nine is authorize assistant city manager to execute a contract with precision concrete cutting to assess and repair sidewalks throughout the city. Is there any items you would like to pull or discuss, counsel?
Number three.
Pardon me?
Number three.
Number three? Okay. Is that Adam?
Yeah, that's Adam.
Okay. Any others? Okay, Adam, go ahead.
Um, I think there's a question for Dan. These are going to be 30-year bonds.
We, here I am.
Actually, it's a custom question for, for Bud Levine, and Bud, you're on the camera. They're just unmute, unmute your, your microphone.
Yes, uh, right now, we have run numbers both as doing a 25-year and 30-year. That'll be decided closer to the time that we actually bring documents to and a proposal for actually issuing the bonds that will be back to the council probably in early December. But right now, with the interest rates being what they are and where we anticipate them being, there's a big advantage to issuing 30-year financing because the difference between 10 and 15-year rates and 30-year rates are fairly narrow. The spread is not as wide as it normally is. Therefore, you're able to spread out the cost of the, of the principal payback over a longer period of time and not pay, uh, that much in additional interest. And remember, part of the financing that's referenced here is going to be the refunding of the 2012 water and sewer, which is going to save the city. We're estimating anywhere from 60 to $100,000 a year. The rest will be the new money project that you're going to be, uh, going to be looking at. And again, the rates are such that, that, uh, those are, uh, they're very attractive interest rates. We will run the analysis before you decide and, and approve on what a 20-year, 25-year and 30-year, uh, would look at, uh, for comparison purposes.
Do you have any idea how much we will pay altogether? It's a $16 million bond, is that correct?
That's, that, that's correct.
Yes, and Adam, just to clarify a little bit, um, one, uh, and it's just for the public's knowledge too. The item that's on here is basically, it's a resolution with, of intent to proceed with a bond issue. So what it allows the city to do is in the interim between now and the issuance of the bonds, it would allow the city to incur costs related to the projects that are in the rate increase, um, inclusive of the solar project that we're going to intend to look at, which will be almost self-funding. It'll pretty much pay for itself with extra savings where obviously with the rate case with the water and sewer, it's basically paid for, the debt service is paid through the, the rate, the actual rates themselves. Um, but this basically, this resolution here basically addresses the two, the two larger projects and then basically allows the, the city to incur costs prior to the issuance of bonds. And then we'll come back with actual documents to the council for formal approval. That'll, that'll cover all the costs associated with the bond issue, what the debt service payments will be, the terms. And Bud, you can add anything else, but hopefully that, um, clarifies something, questions you may have, Adam.
Right. The, the yearly cost of this will be well within the rate covenant requirements to, to, uh, to issue bonds that will also provide under your rates that you just approved, I believe, and Dan can weigh in on this, anywhere to $400,000 to $500,000 excess revenues available for pay-go or anything else that the enterprise system needs. But we will have a total, uh, debts, we will analyze the debt service both on a yearly basis and what the total payments will be over the life of the issue.
Was this still going to come back to us for approval of bonds?
Yes.
Okay, so we're not necessarily approving a bond right now. We're just saying we're going to kind of move forward.
You're moving forward with the process to bring that back to the, to the council in December for approval. However, we, we, we're all working on this on the basis of no, no fees involved until the issue is completed. Uh, we've done quite a bit of work for the city over 15 years. I do believe you have, uh, uh, two members of your council that have, uh, that have been on the council as I've been, uh, providing advisory services. And if there's any serious concern about whether you, the council wants to move ahead with this, I think this is maybe the time to, to talk about that because, uh, we certainly wouldn't want to be moving forward if the consensus of the council is that, uh, you're not going to move forward. Even though, as Dan pointed out, it's incredibly important for the, uh, uh, for the, uh, water enterprise particularly, uh, to, uh, to do this.
Dan, maybe you may be able to answer this next question. Um, with some of that bond money, we're going to repair a water, uh, water tank. Is that correct? That's correct. Okay. What is the lifespan on that water tank? Well, it's lived for 50 years without a lot of attention, 1970. Um, I, we should expect that when the work is done, it'll be good for another 50 years at least. More if it's maintained.
And I might, I might point out that part of the process of issuing the bonds is for the municipal advisor and the underwriter to be satisfied that the useful life of the projects where the money is being spent are, uh, equal to or longer than any debt, uh, obligation that is, would, would be incurred.
Thank you. Go ahead.
What bothers me most, I guess, is the fact that it could be up to 30 years, so our kids, kids, kids could be paying for this bond. Um, another thing that I have an issue with is we, and I will, I will be the first one to say that I failed the people of Colinga by not going to their state representatives or our federal representatives demanding money for some of these projects. So I think there's a lot that, that council has failed on with this and myself. I blame myself first because I'm the loudmouth on this, on this council, so.
I might, I might, I might point out that, that, uh, when you say a 30-year bond issue, if we have, no matter what the term is, whether it's 15 years, 20 years or 30 years, there are always call provisions involved in these bonds where if you do get a source of funds that could be utilized to pay off the obligation, you can, after 10 years, pay off the bonds early with no premium payment made. In other words, whatever the current balance owed on the bonds at, as of 10 years could be utilized to, uh, uh, funds from something like a grant or government funds could be used to pay that off early.
I, I just think it would be very difficult to get additional funds if we already have it paid for. I mean, I'm, I, I can't believe that we can't send the mayor or Mayor Protim up to Sacramento and try and squeeze out a million dollars from our representatives. What have they done for us so far? Nothing. Um, I think that's something that we, we should look into. Uh, that's, I'm not saying that we don't need to get any bonds at all. Yes, we do. We, these, I've been out to the water plant, I've been to the sewer plant, they're in dire need of repair. Just the fact that we haven't tried, tried at all, not even a little bit, to try and get money out of our representatives, out of the state, out of the federal government, out of the county, is a failure on our part. And I think that we need to try that. I think we need to exhaust all avenues before we start going for 30, something that could be 30 years that our kids, kids, kids will be paying for.
You know, there, there are two ways to look at that, and I understand totally what you're talking about. One of the other factors is you are going to have new users in 10 or 15 or 20 years. If everything is paid upfront and you don't have a period of time to pay that off, then the current ratepayers are paying for the benefit of all the later users and, 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 uh, and water users that are, uh, that are, uh, in existence in 15, 20 or 30 years. So many agencies look at this as a way to even out the obligation so that everybody that's benefiting from these improvements, because they do last 50 years, are in effect paying their fair share. Now, you can look at it for the, for your children that are, that are still there. That's, that's certainly a, a, a consideration that you would look at. But there's also other people that are going to be living in the area that are not your children, who are going to be benefiting from the improvements that are put in and, 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 uh, their rates will be paying that over those years. And again, the bonds can be called early if that's the desire of the council.
I, I think that's a good argument. Um, I just feel like we should be squeezing our representatives for every penny we can get. We pay every, every month, we pay for a lobbyist. We're supposed to be lobbying on our behalf. We also have a, um, a grant writer, grant company, who should be working on our behalf. I think that we have not exhausted all avenues to try, I'm not saying, we're not going to get $16 million out of the government. Absolutely not. But I'm saying we could get a million. We could get two million. If we, if we tailor our arguments, especially with the sewer plant, Sacramento loves to go after environmental issues. Absolutely loves it. We can tailor our arguments that we need for environmental issues because we're hauling, um, uh, some kind of garbage out of the sewer plant that is, uh, terrible for the environment and we're paying for it by the ton. That is something we could go to Sacramento for and get help with. I just think that we have not exhausted all avenues to try and pay for this. Before we spend $16 million in bonds, but actually spend like 25, $30 million to pay it back.
Right. Uh, uh, that's a very interesting point, but I'd like to point out that there's two types of bonds that are going to be issued here, as we just talked about. In the refunding, the sewer, uh, bonds that are going to be issued under the resolutions that we're talking about here will have no new capital improvement money. It is solely saving the money for the sewer fund by refunding the existing bonds that, uh, carry a higher rate of interest for a lower rate of interest. So that would, there's no capital improvements related to the sewer. Now, the capital, uh, improvements that are, are, are related to the water, one of the things that we will do after the, if you approve this resolution tonight, leading up to when we come back in December or January for the proposal to actually issue the bonds, would be to explore any other funds that would be available that would not necess, necessitate the issuance of the bonds. That's part of what our advice will be keyed towards in working with your staff and your grant writer and anybody else that, uh, would be in the, in the position of seeking that. That will certainly be explored. But I, I want to point out that we have probably a six to eight-month, uh, window in which to issue bonds at an amazingly low rate and where the cost of projects are extremely low because of inflation being so low. There is sincere worry on the part of many of us in, in this business that after 2021 and on into 2022, all of the liquidity that is being generated in, in the economy through the efforts of the, all of these, uh, uh, proposals and, and, uh, and bond issue, and, uh, and issues from, from Congress and the Federal Reserve will lead to inflation, in which case bond rates may go up substantially. So, uh, I think that, that, uh, with the approval tonight, we will, we will help the city explore for those other funds if they're available. If not, be prepared to come back in December with what the bond issue would look like to provide for the needed capital improvements. Um, and again, no new capital improvements will be, uh, attended to the sewer fund.
I don't disagree. I think, I think this is a great time to get bonds. Interest rates are at historic lows, I think, like you pointed out. Um, what I'd really like to know is what is our payoff amount going to be?
Sure, we, we, we will absolutely provide that. Uh, we have not run the, we ran numbers when we thought the project was going to be around 5 million and, uh, we haven't run the new numbers on the 8 million yet, but we will. And that'll be part of, we'll work with the finance committee, we'll bring that back to them and then, of course, to the, to the, to the full council.
That's one of the things I have an issue with is we're going to, we're going to approve $16 million and have actually no idea how much we're actually paying for.
No, you will know exactly what you're paying for. We will, when, when, when we issue, when the, when the bonds are issued, the bonds will have a, a interest rate, well, they'll be approved to, to, to market with, uh, with parameters that will allow the, the bonds to be issued if those parameters are met. And those parameters will show the interest rate, the yearly debt service, and that will be, uh, uh, the amount of money that's going to be paid out to pay the bonds. Uh, and then the excess will be created every year, uh, from that and the capital improvements that will be, that will be, uh, installed.
And Adam, the, the, the two different projects, one is the solar, which is the 8 million. The other remaining 8 million is in the, the bond project, the projects that were listed on the rate case. And so the $8 million on the solar, the reason why we're proceeding forward with that, that type of project is because it is, it has a built-in savings. So an $8 million project to build that is going to bring down our energy costs. The energy costs are going, the savings are going to pay that debt service in addition to excess savings to the water fund annually. And we'll be bringing that back relatively soon at the same time in terms of showing what those numbers are in terms of what that savings is going to be. So it's actually going to be a net positive to the water fund on the solar project. And, and we're still in the preliminary stages on the solar project. Like the contract with JCI tonight is basically to proceed forward with doing more, um, design work and the environmental and solidifying the, the land and making sure all of that proceeds forward. Um, in terms of the water rates, we, I mean, the water side, those are the projects that we're looking at. And a lot of those projects, we have been looking, working with our grant writers. I, I'm on a monthly call with Blaze and Associates, talking to them. And they provide me, knowing what our needs are, the types of projects and the grants that are available to address the types of needs that we have on the water side. A lot of the projects that are available are like drought resiliency type grants. There are a lot of grants that aren't out there to support a lot of the infrastructure and MNO or the maintenance and operations side of the water that we real, that we critically need. Um, I also have met with Chris Com, I think about a month ago, and expressed to them some of the concerns that we have. Probably the biggest project that potentially might bring some funding for us is possibly the Derek tank, um, rehabilitation. But these types of projects, you know, like I said, a lot of the, the grant funds that are out there aren't specifically for a lot of the needs that we have. Um, because a lot of it is deferred maintenance on aging system. Um, but if you need a new water source or maybe, you know, if, maybe the rehabilitation of the tank, there might be an oppo, opportunity in that case, or other projects that aren't on this list that could cost $30 million, like new tran, new transmission lines from the water plant all the way to the Derek tank. So there's a lot of things we haven't, and we also have a grant application out through SB, through the SB loan um, for a planning grant for the wastewater side. And then hopefully that will, that will in turn, turn into, uh, a larger project, um, on the wastewater side. So we don't have any project money built in to these rates or anything in these bonds for sewer at all. Um, the rates are covering the cost of the sewer. Um, but the, the water rates will, uh, the water rates cover directly to the actual bond and capital projects. So sewers only increase just for maintenance operations with no additional cost. So we're really kind of looking deep into grants for sewer as well.
I might, I might point. Sewer was just an example of, of something that we could say. I mean, I've seen Singer get millions of dollars uh, this last fiscal year to build water tanks out there. Um, what, what have we got?
A lot of it ha, and a lot of it has to do with water quality issues too, that a lot of these agents, that a lot of these agencies have as well. Um, but no, you're right. There, there's opportunities out there and that's, I think, why the council wanted to hire Chris Com. So hopefully we hear back from them and they have some, if they've talked to our representatives to express their, uh, express our concerns and our needs. Um, but they have kind of a marching order from, at least I know that I've talked to them and kind of given them the needs that we have. So until we hear back from them, um, to see what they can potentially help us out with.
Thanks, Sean. I appreciate it. You too, Bud.
Yes, I, I, one more thing to add to what Sean just said. And that is, that, because we haven't gone into how the bonds will be structured, which we'll do when we come back in December. But one of But one of the provisions that are always in bond issues is you have anywhere from three to four years, maybe five years in which to expend the funds. If during that period that you're expending funds on the project, grants are, are available, let's say in the next two years or so, and you haven't completed some of the projects where the grant money can be used, you could then use the grant money for those projects. And if the bond money is not expended after three to five years, you could have, again, use those unexpended funds to call and retire, call some of the bonds, retire some of those bonds because the funds are not really needed for the original purpose. That's always built into every bond issue in the event that that occurs.
That's good to know. I want to take note of that. I appreciate that. Thanks, Bud.
Sure. Thank you. Is there any other comments in regard to that item? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve the consent counter, items one through nine? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second?
We have a motion and a second. May I have roll call, please?
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramsey?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
As of now, I'm a no.
Um, could you repeat that, please?
As of now, I'm a no.
On the consent calendar?
Yes.
Sorry, not the consent calendar, on the item we were just talking about.
Oh, item three, you vote no. Okay.
Everything else I vote yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Stolz?
Aye.
Mayor Lander?
Aye. Thank you. Our next item is ordinance presentation, discussion and potential action items. We have one item, that is discussion regarding modernization of veterans park. City Manager Marissa Trejo.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this item was requested as a future agenda item by Councilman Atkinson. So, um, I'll let him go ahead and speak about what his ideas were for the park.
All right, thank you, Marissa. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Uh, so I've, uh, this has been something I've been wanting to work on for a while. I think our veterans park is kind of rundown and, uh, doesn't really, um, doesn't really, there's nothing there that really makes people want to meet there and, um, and enjoy the place. So one thing that I was looking at is having, uh, some kind of privately funded, uh, group to help, um, bring more, like a statue or some kind of memorial or something that recognizes all the branches of the military as well. Um, we're still working with architects and stuff like that, so I don't have anything in front of me. But I just wanted to make sure with council that this may be something we might, might want to move forward with. Obviously, everything that happens there is going to be approved by council. That, that's basically why I put it on the agenda, to, to move forward and, uh, see if we can make it a lot better looking park.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments in regard to this?
No, I agree with him. We, we wanted to do that in the past and we, uh, the city didn't have the money to it. But go on with a, um, with private, maybe, maybe it'll go, we can do this with private because Clint has always stepped up for stuff like this, so this would be, this is a good, uh, good thing to do.
I totally agree with you. So, um, so you're asking for direction to proceed forward, Adam? Is that what you want us to do?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that this is something that council agrees with before I move forward and start getting people to come out, like, got it, forgive estimates and all that kind of stuff. Um, again, this is all privately funded.
Okay, so here's what I'm going to ask for. I'm going to ask for, all those in agreement, say aye. I say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go. Thank you, Adam. Our next item is an announcement. City Manager, you have announcements?
Yes, um, I just wanted to make sure that the, uh, the public was aware of the rental assistance program that we have. It is on our website. It is on our Facebook page. We also have the small business grant application on our website and on our Facebook page. And I know Mary Jones has posted it in the paper, uh, both programs as well. The deadline for the small business grant is October twenty-second and the deadline for the rental assistance is October twenty-ninth. Um, my phone number is five five nine nine three five fifteen thirty-three, extension one eleven. So anyone can call me with any questions they have while they're, uh, working on their applications.
Thank you. Council members, any announcements? Seeing none. Mayor's announcement? I have none. Go ahead, Ron.
I just wanted to say that, uh, Councilman Atkinson, myself and, uh, the city manager, Marissa, we all, uh, talked to, uh, TJ Cox yesterday on our CARES money and he's supposed to be going back to the governor and trying to, to get the money for us. So this was the last ditch effort to, uh, to try to get the CARES money for us. So I want to, uh, thank Adam and I want to thank the city manager. And I know the, the whole council wants this, so, um, I want to thank you guys for doing this. Thank you.
And Chris Com.
And Chris Com.
Thank you, Ron. Mayor's announcement? I have none. Is there any future agenda items?
I have one.
Yes.
I would like to start, uh, seeing if we can start talking about, um, opening the council meeting back up to, uh, we're on phase red right now. So, um, I want to see if we can just start to, start to talk about it. We don't have to open right away, but let's, let's start the, the talk about how, how we're going to do this and how we're going to do it safely.
Okay.
Open up the.
Okay, any other? Okay, seeing none. All right, we're going to be going into closed session. We have one item. That's conference with labor negotiators, Government Code five four nine five seven point six. City negotiators, city manager, Marissa Trejo, city attorney and Mario Zamora, and, hmm, okay, Mario Zamora, Employee Organization Colinga Police Officers Association. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much for your participation. Have a great evening.
Thank you.